We talked about this twenty thousand dollar business with the communication system. The potholes existed in the city way before any of these recalls.
Right.
Oh, I've been had potholes. However, twenty thousand dollars to further an agenda, let's just call it what it is, it's an agenda, to drag your name out of the mud and you're not even dealing with mainstream media. Some of you have only been politicians for two point five seconds and you really honestly believe you can spend taxpayer money, twenty thousand dollars of taxpayer money to fund a program that's going to drag your name out of the mud? Do you really honestly think that that's gonna work? You're not even dealing with Channel Five, Channel Three, Channel Nineteen. You haven't even dealt with mainstream media and you really honestly think that people are gonna sit in their homes and go, "Oh, you're doing such a wonderful job." I could walk right on Euclid Avenue and can tell you're not doing a good job. Twenty thousand dollars to drag your name out of the mud and you want us to pay for that? And then on top of that, you want us to patch a pothole and take a hundred and fifty dollars out of my money that I'm spending on my kids, I have to pay tuition for my high school, my child that goes to high school. His tuition is a hundred and fifty dollars a month. So you want me to take the taxes that I already paid to this city, take a hundred and fifty dollars of my own money to patch a pothole when you have twenty thousand dollars to go out and fix it right now? And you want us to actually do that?
I don't think so.
I don't think so. Like I said, you've been politicians for two point five seconds. You haven't even, this is politics. Deal with it.
Very good.
Thank you, my, thank you council. Excuse me.
Audience, please, please be respectful of the speakers. Let it be very pleased. Thanks.
Thank you very much. May I start now? Please. Thank you very much. I would like to put a couple of things into context. The first thing is the resolution concerning the public access channel where we are contributing, those of us who have cable and paid cable bills, we are contributing to the franchise fee that can be utilized to provide us access. To put it into context, twenty thousand dollars is half of the amount that the council last approved for public access for a year. In fact, the last contract that the council voted in support of during fiscal emergency was twenty thousand dollars for only six months of service that did not include the operating and the maintaining of the channel, but only the covering of council meetings. So put that to context. The other thing is that I would like to mention the fact that we do have a huge infrastructure problem with regards to our streets and roads. All of our streets and roads are not East Cleveland streets. We have county roads and state roads and we should not be bearing the sole obligation for the maintenance of those roads, especially when our roads come under additional stress as a consequence of having the largest transportation hub of the RTA. So that's inordinate use and I would ask councils and the administration to look at working with other public officials at the county and state level as well as the regional transit authority and the Ohio Department of Transportation to look into securing funds for the maintenance of our state and county roads that are unduly used, not just by the residents of East Cleveland, but by people commuting throughout northeast Ohio. In addition to that, I would also like to point out to the fact that we are having more construction of new housing units than there has been in decades in the city of East Cleveland. And I think that's important for the residents to know that in spite of the declining conditions that are always spoken about, we have new constructions, I believe over forty new units on the way to being built, as well as the ten million dollar Salvation Army building, which provided in permits alone, more than the value of the land.
The land, right.
And it's not just, and the fact that it's a nonprofit organization doesn't mean that the people working there will not be paying income tax. And also with respect to the new units that we get, the average income, and our city is more than half funded on income tax. The average income of a person moving into these new units is more than four times the average income of the rest, of the working, the average working resident of East Cleveland. So for every, for forty-three housing units that may give us seventy or eighty residents, we're getting like three hundred and twenty new residents with respect to the level of income contribution they're providing our city. So I would like those things to be spoken about more so, so people see that there is development going on and aren't so anxious to see our city annexed. You're on the touch of a new wave of development that we have not seen in the past forty years. This is the wrong time to be contemplating annexation. Thank you very much.
Very good.
You're the city council.
Very good, Mr. Branch.
One eighty-eight, eighteen fifty-seven, Rhys Leonard. The first thing I want to say is, you got to give us respect to give respect. Ain't no way the world letter should be going out to the citizens that really can't defend theyself because y'all sitting up here with the power that y'all think that y'all have. Why you got that little power? You better use it wisely. Another thing is the recall. The reason why is a recall because we don't like the way you do business. And when you don't like the way people do business, you get rid of them. And Ms. Branch, body, as the body, we have, I have actually thought that I did a good deed when I walked with you. But this ain't no personal thing, but it's a business thing because I want you to know how important it is on Noble Road, how that dump look. People is getting sick.
Yes.
They can't come out their doors. The streets on terrorists is really destruction, is in the night. And I'm looking at this council to look up for leadership when you always failing us and always adding something onto the plate that we cannot handle. I'm asking you to do your homework because somebody ain't doing their homework because you keep making the same mistake over and over and over and over again. Now, we got this source system coming out with false information and I'm telling you, everything that they said ain't true, okay? You better do your homework before somebody lose their life. We got enough damages in our city and the holes that they want to put in, in the ground is bigger than the football team, football fair. And we have to be careful that we got children. When you dig a ditch, just be careful that we all don't fall with it, amen? Because sometimes we'll fall into the ditch and can't get out. And that's what Barbara Thomas was trying to tell you, how deep is it? How wide is it? You got to do your homework, okay? I'm not mad at nobody, but if wrong is wrong and right is right, I'll go with right.
That's right. Very good. Very good.
I extinguish her. She just took a lot of what I wanted to say. But I do want to say to you, I will reiterate, please do your homework and make sure that the sewer district is telling us the truth. And a perfect example of them not telling us the truth, I don't know anyone, cause they said, he has it on film, that the board members were all for it. I don't know when that meeting was. But we just heard today that they just found out about it yesterday. So that wasn't true. So when you tell me one untrue now, I'm gonna get you kind of strangled, okay? So I'm asking that you please just be sure that they're sharing the truth with us.
Do your job.
Councilwoman Graham, I kind of like you because I think you're willing to work with the people.
Right.
Ms. King, you gotta pull back some.
I know that's.
Your demeanor is a little strong.
Strong, right.
A little Donald Trump.
Be humble. Be a little humble.
But I understand, you know, Donald said you getting to the point. But when you're dealing with us, these are your people, these are our dollars that have placed you in that seat.
This is our city.
Pull back a little bit.
There you go.
But I think if you all would just work with us and explain it, even if it takes twenty times, in a manner that you understand, because you're the only ones that understand it, we might come around, okay? But please protect my babies. Protect these babies.
Yes, that's right. That's right. Thank you.
Evening, council.
All right, Gerald.
Back in January, I came before this body and I made two requests.
Can't hear you.
In January, I came before this body and made two requests and I've yet to have those requests fulfilled. First matter deals with the issue of chapter one thirteen and the rules of council. As a consequence of a member of this body filing criminal charges against the previous council clerk, no meeting between the months of October and December was legally held in compliance with your own rules of order.
Ooh, my God.
I requested an opinion from the law director to validate the validity of all legal proceedings that took place from October to December. I'm still waiting for that response. The second response is, has to do with chapter one eleven of the charter. And I am waiting for a certification from the law director, our contact the law director, that every employee, every elected official of this city is in full and complete compliance with the requirements of that provision of the charter. And I'm still waiting, I would like to have that, both of those items within the next thirty days.
All right. Well, we got to go. You got it, baby.
Leon Heinz, one six zero six one, Clevenin. Council, law, mayor is not on.
Always.
Once again, I've talked civics for the last thirty-eight years of my life. So I understand how government works and I understand the great pressure that comes upon those individuals that have been selected to run the city, government, whatever else. I also understand the great pressures you may have at certain times when you're looking at things. You must continue, and this is a pep talk, I'm not trying to do anything more than encourage all of my whole community to come along with us. You must really, at certain times, step aside from everything else and she said something that reminded me in my classroom, sometimes I have to say something twenty different ways to get to the point that there's a situation that we need to deal with. So I understand the process that you have to go through. I also understand my community and I also understand the fact that we're here for our health, our city, and mainly the children and grandchildren. I understand that all, I really do. But I also want to be very, very clear in what I'm getting ready to say next. Government, we understand that the state has taken away our funding. Every dime that we used to get from the state, we used to get, every city suburb inside of Cleveland used to get millions of dollars to run their program. The governor Kasich, having through his wisdom, decided to slash those funds. That's slack. But the thing that I'm really trying to get across to everybody inside this room is that we do have to pull ourselves together. Yes, I am that individual that everybody needs to know, I'm the one that cleaned up the two streets off of Euclid Avenue.
Oh, very good.
I understand the process that you have, but I also understand that some people are not have, don't have that wither off to do that. But the one piece that I'm really concerned about, we're not going to deal with the water. The recycling center, recycling center, and believe me, I'm inside of this industry a little bit too, it was supposed to come and dump and remove.
There you go.
It was never supposed to come and stay. There has to be, and I requested my council, now that I'm getting to the point that I really want to get to, I requested my law director, my mayor, my council now contact the federal EPA, not the state.
The federal.
Going to the federal government, reaching out to Marsha Fudd, Councilwoman Fudd, reaching out to our senators and sending them a form letter, something that says, "Our citizens back our council and our mayor and our law director to come and do something about this." Thank you.
Very good. I can find out who's in charge of the federal EPA there.
Good evening. I'm Mary Green. I was working for a couple council meetings ago. I just wanted to say a few things, just in observance. Few people came up and said some things that I agree with and some that I don't. I think that my stance remains the same in the fact that there has to be a bridge between here and here. And we both have to be open to meet each other on that bridge or cross it and see what's going on on this side and vice versa. That's the only way that this is gonna happen. We've been beating each other down since I've been observing and that's not gonna get us anywhere. So it's really, I think it's just a matter of, again, the communication and the community program. And I think this is a little formal. Open some things up so that people can come out. I do understand the media aspect of it. I don't think it's gonna be to try to clean anybody's name up, but if my children are at home with me, I don't have children, nieces and nephews are at home with me and they're able to watch something and recognize somebody that may live in the same area as them doing something positive, I think that that would be a pretty good thing. I think that eventually they'll want to be involved with something positive because they're seeing it on television. Now, I'm not in charge of the budget. I can't speak on that. I don't know how you guys work that out. But when it comes down to it, I think because our children are the future, then we need to provide things for them and they should be the priority. So the potholes, yes, they've been here for a very long time. And no, I wouldn't want to spend a hundred and fifty dollars getting a pothole fixed, but at the same time, sign me up because my street needs it. So you have to be a part of the change that you want to see take place. And clearly, they can't do it. So a hundred and fifty dollars to me is a small donation to fixing something that's a problem for me every single day when I drive down my street. Okay? So, other than that though, I think that for the most part, you guys are doing a great job. I would love to see more solidarity and you guys not kind of do this in front of us because we need to see that so that we can do this. That's important. Thank you.
Is there any, anyone else, please? Yeah, there's Gerald Struthers, one four zero one nine, Northfield Avenue. I'm sorry, my voice is bad. I went up to shoot at that Noble Road dump because they, people asked me to come and shoot these stuff going overflow. I've got some kind of asbestos thing happening with my throat.
Would you like a haul, sir?
No. I just want to finish this off. I didn't throw, I have enough juice in my, in my.
Can we get you some water, some water, sir?
No, sir. Can I finish?
Please.
Because I'm the media, I guess sometimes. What I was, what I was asking about, that Noble Road thing is a mess. When I shot it, I didn't think it was that bad, but I seen it pushed it off. When I shot the outside perimeter on Euclid, it's falling over. And I got a close-up, sick. So you don't, you guys all laugh, you don't think these people are being sick. The council person, you know, they need, they need help. That's not a joke. I don't tell you, my voice is brassy because I wanted to express because I decided to go do that shoot up there and put it on four four one one two news. I also put the letter that you sent me, Mr. Wheeler, I don't think that that letter came from everybody. I didn't see everybody's name on it. It was a letter directly from you.
Personal.
To Art McCoy and kept him out of this meeting. They kept Otis Mays out of meeting. It came from you. It didn't have, it wasn't, it wasn't from the council. I didn't hear them say, I didn't hear anyone say. I hadn't heard, nobody stood up and say, "Hey, that was wrong." I'm gonna tell you, there's nobody in this room, it's been as many council meetings I have, I've telecast and been more council meetings than any of y'all, including Mr. Martin. I've been more meetings than anybody. I've never seen anything like that, ever, ever. I put your letter up on the web, people are laughing at it. They couldn't believe that you would draft up a letter to me and send it to me.
Yes. Oh, my God.
As far as the information's going, you want to interview, I'll give you an interview. You got it. Unedited, tell me what you want. You got it. People want to hear from you. I'm giving you the opportunity to get in front of them. Fifty-two thousand people a day go to four four one one two news on Facebook and the website. So if you want your opportunity to speak, tell these people how you're gonna help them because they're like my family on Noble Road. I'm, my voice is, I'm, I'm sick, I gotta go to VA hospital over this. You don't understand how bad it is up there when the weather breaks, it's gonna be all hell. Pay the captain. So if you want your interview, you want a free, you got it. I don't edit it. Your call. Somebody should have said something about that on Art McCoy and Otis Mays. That was wrong. Y'all know that was wrong. That was wrong.
Thank you for your responses. We will now move to response of the council and mayor to remarks of the public.
We finished now. The public is finished.
If you don't mind, I'll make my first one.
We don't even respect this.
You don't even respect.
You're right, Mr. Struthers. Nobody's done that since they've been in the previous council, nobody's done that. But you think it's okay that your conduct is okay in council?
You are, you are.
And I disagree.
Let them talk.
I think that we try to run, we try to run business in the city, in this other city. What we need to do is we need to address and handle it appropriately. You can't just talk out of term, you can't just get, Art McCoy argued with me, disrespect one of our council members, one on the body. I gotta, I gotta, right is right and wrong is wrong. And you can't just get up here in the meeting and just go off when you want to. And right now, there's a couple people that, please, Mr. Struthers, I finish.
Let them finish.
The thing that I'm saying is, today, this was a smooth meeting. No outbursts, nobody being all loud, disrespectful at all. That's all, that's all I'm trying to say. So we can hear what you have to say, so we can take that in and make decisions that need to be done for the benefit of the community. That's one.
We don't.
There's a lot that needs to be done and the city don't have a lot of money. The Good Neighbor Ambassador Program, we did that two years ago on my own street. We offered in twenty dollars a fee so we could fix the potholes on my street two years ago. Some neighbors didn't do it, some did. That's what, that's what East Cleveland was made of before you came to town. East Cleveland was everybody working together, cutting grass and playing pass in park and sweeping it up at the end of the night, at the end of the day. I mean, that's what East Cleveland was about, helping the neighbor. If the neighbor next door hugging pass, then you cut the grass automatically, don't want no money. We just do that because that's the way we were raised.
And that's the way it's.
That's East Cleveland. Let me tell you a little bit more about East Cleveland. We help one another, we protect one another, and if somebody did something wrong, go get his mother or go get a switch. Ms. Davis from down the street, she wasn't my mother, but she acted like my mother when I was online. That's what East Cleveland was all about. So maybe I'm not doing it the way you think it should be done, but maybe that's a problem. We need to do it the way it used to be done. Also, we're getting two hundred new units down at Euclid Lake, two hundred new units. You heard, you heard Devin Branch, the income that will bring in. We tearing down fourteen hours on Northfield loan, we doing a hundred and forty in my war. That's coming down. Yeah, we should have, we should have, we should have enforced the Hobbie Code, we should have done that, but that was before I got here. I've been council president now for less than ninety days. We trying to do what's rightful to the city. We trying to do the best we can. And I don't know what you all looking for, it's not a magic wand, it's not gonna happen overnight, but it changes, sometimes it hurt, but when you get to it at the end of the day, as long as we progress forward is what we trying to do. Salvation Army, we bought that in since we've been here. That's five, that's five to million dollar project. Fees a permit's a loan, adding more money.
They ain't get no taxes.
So, yo, I don't know who else is gonna build down on Hayden Dome, but we got that going on. So we doing a lot, whether you all believe it or not, we doing a lot.
It's a nonprofit. I want to correct that. Yeah, that's why, they give them the weight to sit.
Yes. I need to say a few things.
If you don't mind, I'm gonna leave in a minute.
You can. I had a conversation with the council president the other day about this letter barring Struthers and Otis Mays and Art McCoy and all like that. And I told him that I didn't think it was a wise thing to do, his narrative already went out and all like that. And he said he has reasons. I had a conversation with Otis Mays the night I left the meeting when all this jumped off and I basically told Otis Mays, I said, "I want you to exercise wisdom." I said, "We get you two minutes, speak to you two minutes, we get you three minutes, speak to you three minutes." And I said, "As long as you do that, you ain't got nothing to worry about." So I come to the meeting tonight, the first, and the first person I see is Otis Mays and he greets me and says that he can't come to the meeting.
He got to come back.
Well, he'll be back, but I mean, we just can't operate like.
No, we can't.
The citizens.
Constitutional rights.
I've been dealing with this kind of stuff for many, many years. It comes with the territory, it's just not a perfect situation. I do think that whether Wheeler and them are trying, I think Wheeler's really trying, I think, I think he's trying. I think it's not what you do but how you do it. I would have, if it was that deep, I would approach each one one-on-one verbally and say, "This is where I'm coming from," but to put it in writing, it's just not, I don't think it's a wise thing to do. I understand, if you guys come here, you have a right to do that. You pay taxes. I have cable, okay? Seventy-two dollars every month.
Me too.
Okay, to see what's going on. But my feeling is this, I'm driving through this three miles, jumping potholes when I can see them. Sometimes you can't see them at night and if I can get a hold of twenty, thirty thousand dollars, let's put something in them hole.
There you go.
You know, I talked about it, I talked about it, then three weeks ago, I drive out of here to Evan Branch and tear up a tire, brand new tire. I had just got a week ago. I take it over there and the guy tell me, "We can't do nothing with this," okay? So we gotta do better than that. Then I get a letter from the RTA, bus driver complaining about it. Okay, so, I mean, I'm not against legacy communication, Dr. Rice, but what do we really need to be, we need to deal with that the best we can. We can't pave the whole street, so let's put something in there. Let's put something in there, okay? So I'm just exercising common sense. This here is democracy. It's not a perfect situation.
No, it's not.
But you cannot bar your citizens, I mean, without talking to them. I'm totally, I'm totally against that kind of stuff. I'm totally against that kind of stuff. I want to thank you for voting.
That's right.
Okay? Because that's where your voice is. If you don't vote, you don't count. I've been saying it for a long time. So you gotta vote, you gotta get engaged, bring other people here to see what we're doing, okay? I'm, you know, I'm looking at this and this is gonna hurt your feelings when I'm saying this because I've been up here longer. I get calls all the time, I get, I get calls at midnight, okay? I get calls all the time. And you know, you know what, Joey Graham and I say to this about the money. We haven't had a raise in thirty years. Never anybody come up here and say that. Thirty years. Thirty. Thirty years.
We know.
Okay?
We know.
You know, and, and, you know, but it's, it's a principle about that. I mean, it's got to be some balance. We hear the complaining all the time, you know? I got a full-time job and this, I deal more with this than my full-time job. It's amazing, going to meetings, dealing with this and dealing with that. So I want you to take that into consideration. If I don't get a raise in the next five or six, somebody else is new, you need to look at that. I mean, this goes all the back to nineteen eighty-five. Can you believe that? You know, come on now. What's fair is fair. Okay, so specifically engaged. And lastly, I have a Democratic Club meeting that is one of the best in the county, we're told by these lawyers and stuff.
Yes, it is.
Okay? We meet at the library, thank Dr. Rice and Tiffian. We meet to, we meet tomorrow, we serve a full dinner, we talk about these things, we're gonna talk about the election, okay? Malcolm talked about the battle of the border. Your power is in your, is in your vote. So I'm inviting you to come tomorrow at four thirty to our meeting. We'd love to have you. And you can say, you get to speak whatever, but people are coming. We have a great group.
Oh, yeah.
This city has so much potential because of the size of it, it's only three miles. Okay? Randy King got a Benz, he doing it right here. Okay? All right? So we could turn, you know what, we could turn this thing around in five years if we come together. But it depends on us. Thank you for this meeting.
I just want to remind everyone that my committee meeting is the last Tuesday of the month. I've had, ever since I've been in, I've had a committee meeting every time that I've been able to have a committee meeting and I've talked about the Arco Recycling Facility. First meeting, I think maybe one resident came, second meeting, maybe about five residents came. So this is something that I have brought up and brought to the table. By the way, I'll mention, I live one street over from the Arco Facility, so I see that every day.
I deal with the issues. So, it's something personal to me. Um, so, this Tuesday, I will have a meeting at six thirty.
Where?
Here at City Hall, that's where all the committee meetings are. And I would urge anyone to come out, anything you can bring to the table, any suggestions as far as what we can do, if we can go over the contract, because this is something that I have inherited. And so, I just want to put that out there. And, um, I, I really want to establish some type of collective consciousness within our city, and how we can come together. I mean, one thing that I realized is that we're one of the last small, predominantly African-American cities across the country. And that's something to be proud of. And when we look back at this day and say, "Would, if, could, or should've," I don't want that to be a reality for us, because of facilities or what have you. And with all the naysayers or what have you, I think that that is, you know, instead of